Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
The current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We get two special presentations tonight, and after the second one, we're actually going to take a recess of the council for about, I don't know, maybe 15 minutes, so we can enjoy a little bit of a reception, and then as that winds down, we'll come back together and move on with the rest of the meeting. But the first presentation we have is for Ms. Ruth Piper. Where's she? Come on up, please. I think everybody knows Carla is the city attorney, retired in August, former city attorney, retired in August. She spent nine years with us, and she was actually the first in-house appointed city attorney for the city of Papillion. We'd always outsourced her before that, so when we started looking for a city attorney to bring it in-house, we didn't even really start with Carla. We called Carla to say, "Do you know of somebody?" And somewhere in that conversation, it became her. But I don't think we could have made a better choice, because you think of law and the impact it has on the city. To have somebody who just knows the city, has been involved with it, and loves the city, that's probably the best person to have is the first city attorney. So Carla, thank you very much for what you've been doing. I want to congratulate you on your retirement. But she's not going away. She's actually gonna, she's still helps serve on the Midlands Community Foundation Board, which makes a tremendous impact on Sarpy and Cass County, and she's been on that board for quite a while. And one of the actions on tonight's agenda is actually appointing her to the Civil Service Commission, which she used to be on until she became the city attorney and had to get off. So we're not getting rid of her. But I've got two things for you. One is just a plaque. It just says, "In honor of your service to a special friend and colleague, Carla Ruth Piper, retired with distinction from the city of Papillion on the third day of August 2019." And the next is an official proclamation, and I'll read it. "Whereas Carla Ruth Piper began her career at the city of Papillion in 2010 and served as city attorney for nine years. And whereas these years of service have been marked by exemplary dedication to the best interests of the city of Papillion, and our community has benefited greatly because of Carla's leadership. And whereas Carla Ruth Piper has worked tirelessly for the betterment of the city of Papillion, contributing to the health and safety of the entire community. And whereas Carla Ruth Piper faithfully and conscientiously served the city of Papillion and its citizens during a period of growth with numerous projects initiated with her expertise that will continue to have an impact on the city of Papillion for generations to come. And whereas Carla Ruth Piper has been a valuable and dedicated employee, and her legacy of knowledge and service to the city of Papillion and the Papillion community at large are greatly appreciated by our community. Now therefore, I, David P. Black, Mayor of the city of Papillion, do hereby honor Carla Ruth Piper for nine years of dedicated service and countless contributions to the city of Papillion."
Well, I really wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of my colleagues, council members, our mayor, our former city administrator, Dan Hoynes, Chris Myers, Amber, all of my colleagues. I miss you all so very much. Retirement, it was the right time for me, and I was, I'm very, very pleased to have spent the time here with the city, the time that I had. So I hope I made a difference. As I'm listening to all of these accolades, it's hard to believe that my name's on this plaque, but I just want you to know that you will always be very special to me. This is, working for the city has been a career highlight. So thank you for that opportunity, and you'll forever be my friends. So, thank you.
The next one we've got is Mr. Dick Kimball. Dick would come up. Dick is retiring from the Civil Service Commission. And because we do record this in the public season, I don't think a lot of people even know what the public, what the Civil Service Commission is, but it's probably one of the most important commissions we've got. It's really the commission that keeps the, the politics out of public safety. You can think of a small town where there's not a lot of controls, and the police officer pulls over a city council person and gives them a ticket or writes them ups or something, and in a, in a small town with no controls, that city council person may say, "Get that police officer fired." So how do you bring integrity into that whole public safety and protect them? And that's a lot of what the Civil Service Commission does. Probably the biggest impact the Civil Service Commission has is they play a role in the hiring of all police officers and, and fire professionals. They run, they manage the tests, they create the list that's hired from, they make the recommendations of the final candidates then that are chosen from. And so you can think of the impact they have there. If there is ever a discipline action, the appeal of that individual is to the Civil Service Commission. The Civil Service Commission's basically acting as judge and jury on that item as well. Thankfully, you don't do that very often, and I don't know if we've done that in 10 years, maybe once in his entire career, which I think again says how good of a job they do, and they really keep the integrity of the process, or they build the integrity into Papillion. There's a lot of people here, not by accident, a lot of police, a lot of fire, a lot of family, civil service commissioners, union representatives, the rural fire district. He's impacted every one of those. And I believe every single police officer, fireman, EMS that is in the city of Papillion, Dick has been involved in hiring them, including our oldest, which is Steve Young. I just confirmed that you did Steve, because I wasn't sure. But I've got a proclamation as well, but we've also got a few people that might want to share a few words. Let me invite first Councilman Ingberg. Councilman Ingberg, if people are not aware, actually was a police chief, and probably the oldest of the living police chiefs, I'm assuming. And so he's a very seasoned individual. So he brings a couple of perspectives, is why I wanted him to share. One is, being the, the police chief, he has seen the impact from that perspective. And then also being, as the longest-serving council member, he has seen it from an elected's perspective. So Councilman Ingberg.
Well, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say, when I arrived here tonight, is when the mayor actually said, "I'd like to have you say a couple of words tonight." And that really terrified me. Not coming up with something impromptu to say, what scares me is half the council chambers is full of Kimbels. That's, that's what makes me really apprehensive, is all the Kimbels out there. Actually, I've known Dick relatively short period of time, about 40 years, I suppose, starting out, going to school with, it seems like half his kids. But I've had the, the honor and distinction of having worked with Dick, both as the police side of things, as police chief. I always knew that he would make sure that we always had really good candidates to be a part of our police department, and I was never let down in any way, shape, or form. They were always good, they were always good quality, they were good people. And I knew that's what would come through with Dick on the civil service. Since that time, also being on the city council now 27 years, I have had, I had the opportunity to work with Dick in a different way, in some respects, and got the same response. As I think Dick mentioned to the mayor a minute ago, I can only remember one time where we've ever had a, a civil service hearing on, on a matter that was appealed. And I know in my 27 years on the council, we've never had anything come to us in any way, shape, or form that was negative or wasn't productive from Dick. I don't think people realize how much time and how much effort hiring every police officer we have in, in the city of Papillion right now, and I think almost all the police chiefs, what a big job that is. And this is a volunteer position. And I guess finally, I'll, I'll just say this. I could sit here and say, Dick has a lot of integrity, Dick cares about people, he cares about the community. I could go on and on and pay accolades, but I'll pay him the best when I can. Dick is simply the best human being I think I've ever known. Thank you.
Thank you. We asked Chief Boz to share, but he's not with us, but we do have a video. See if that'll come up.
Hi, Dick. I am very sorry that I couldn't be there this evening to share this with you, but I wanted to convey this special message to you that we will really miss your leadership on the commission. You are such a man of integrity. You've led us through ups and downs. We so appreciate all the time that you've dedicated to making Papillion a great place to live and work. Thank you for your years of service.
And I also'd like to invite Carla back up. Carla brings, again, a couple of perspectives. She was the city attorney for nine years, and so if there was ever an action, she could have been involved in that. But she also served on the Civil Service Commission with Dick for a number of years, and is going back on it. So again, she's got kind of a dual perspective as well.
Well, I just want you to know, Dick, that you set the standard for this commission. I had the great pleasure of really getting to know you when I served on the Civil Service Commission, and then, and then again, as I served as the city's attorney on a number of matters that came before the Civil Service Commission. And you have set the gold standard. And, and so, on the one hand, I'm sad to see you leave, as I'm going to be sworn in. I was, you know, but I know you will be continuing to be in the community. But I just want you to know that there is a debt of service owed to you by this community for your work. So thank you.
Last, I'd like to invite Steve Young up. Yogi, again, has probably three different perspectives, is the reason I thought of him. One, of all of the current police and fire, he is the oldest from a tenure perspective, so of the existing staff, that would have been your first hire. But then, he also currently is in command staff, so he's got the perspective of an individual from the command staff and what it means. But most of the years in his career, he was in the rank and file, and actually in the union, and a union leader, so he's actually got that perspective. So I think about every perspective you could have, Steve brings, and I'd like to have him share a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. Carla, first of all, congratulations on your retirement. Dick, what can be said? Well, if you would have waited 15 months, I'd go with both of you, but you decided to jump the gun and go early. There's a couple of words used and not tossed around gently, and that's ethics and, and integrity. And when it comes to first responders, we hold those at the top of the list. You maintain that for 37, 38 years. That's not an easy feat. You held our feet to the fire, you promoted only the best, you hired only the best, and for that, those of us in a supervisory position are eternally, eternally grateful. Those sitting out here in the audience are eternally grateful. I'm standing up here as Steve Young right now, but I'm telling you, as a first responder and speaking for my brothers and sisters, we owe you a date, a great debt of gratitude, and we'll be forever in your debt. Stay a friend.
We've heard a lot about integrity, and we've heard about only maybe one grievance or dispute. Don't take that for granted. There are cities in our own metro area that disputes at the civil service are a very common thing, and you actually end up with the civil, Civil Service Commission hiring an attorney because the city is suing the city, administration suing the Civil Service Commission because they disagree. So we do not take for granted at all your leadership on the Civil Service Commission. I do have a proclamation for Dick as well that I'd like to read. Recognizing the retirement of Dick Kimball, 30 years of service to the city of Papillion. Whereas Dick Kimball began his appointment to the city of Papillion Civil Service Commission on October 1982, and has served several terms as chairman during that time. And whereas Dick Kimball has been a valuable part of the hiring process of five police chiefs, Steve Ingberg, Erp Portis, Dan Hoynes, Leonard Halus, and Scott Lyons, and two fire chiefs, Paul Wagner and Bill Boz. And whereas Dick has been involved in the selection of every fire and police personnel on staff. And whereas these years of service have included countless meetings, testing sessions, appeal hearings, and other demands placed on a fervent family man. And whereas Dick and his wife, Pat, have five kids, 10 grandkids, three great-grandkids who bear witness to Dick's community service and sacrifice. And whereas Dick's strong work ethic and perseverance have left a positive impact on both the citizens and staff of the city of Papillion. And whereas Dick's work has been highly valued and greatly appreciated through his years of service with the city. Now therefore, I, David P. Black, Mayor of the city of Papillion, do hereby present this proclamation to express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Dick Kimball for 37 years of dedicated service and countless contributions to the city of Papillion. We wish Dick the very best in retirement. And we also have a non-working key to the city. I think we've given two or three of these out. Maybe, this one may be only the second one I think we've given out since I've been mayor, so. A non-working key to the city of Papillion, but you're welcome here anytime. Would you like to share a few words?
Yes.
And a lot of family here, maybe introduce them, but also because hardly anybody understands who's serving on the Civil Service Commission, if you maybe introduce those individuals as well. Thank you.
I might mention, thank you, David. My wife, Pat, yesterday said, "They're going to give you the key to this city?" And I said, "Don't be crazy." So much to say, so little time. I really do, I'm overwhelmed by this. And I, I have to say that I should be thanking the city, because it's, how else could a, just a regular person, a citizen, be part of the most, one of the most important aspects that we have, and that's obtaining and keeping the best people who protect our lives and our, and our property. Didn't start out that way. First of all, my mentor, Lowell, was a member, was an original member of the Civil Service Commission 150 years ago. With mine, I wasn't, I wasn't recruited by the city, actually. When Bill Oliver retired, and Mike Greco was on the, on civil service, the city council, and he needed a replacement for his seat, and then he wanted a fellow named Ray Scott, and Ray had turned him down. So Mike said, "You're, you're a friend of Ray's. Would you, would you convince him that he needs to take my place on the city council?" So I talked to Ray, and Ray said, "I can't." He said, "I'm on the Civil Service Commission, and that's a conflict of interest." And I said, "Oh," and he said, "But I'll tell you what, knowing Ray, if, if you take my place on the council, on, on the commission, I'll take, I'll, I'll take the council job." And I said, "What's involved?" "No, not much. We don't meet very often. We only have three members," and blah, blah, blah. I said, "Okay." And I did it, and of course, 18 months later, he was off the council. For reelection, he didn't run, didn't run for reelection. Anyway, after he was appointed, after I was appointed, and my office was in the Chamber of Commerce on the second floor down there, he comes up carrying this huge cardboard box, it's kind of flat, and he says, "There you go." And I said, "What's that?" And he said, "Well, these are the civil service records, and, and our, our tradition is that the newest member is a secretary, and you got him." And I said, "What am I supposed to do with them?" And he said, "I don't know about you, but I keep them under my bed." It's true. So I did that for a while, too. Over the years, it's been extremely, at first it was an obligation, and then it didn't take long to realize it was a privilege, an absolute privilege to do this, and to be with, with so many members of the, of the city who have passed through. And we've got how many here now? We've got Gene Klein right now, and we've got Jim Ratajkowski a little bit ago, there he is, and others, and Lowell, again, my mentor. Relationships with the city have been great over the years. At one little glitch, a newly hired city administrator wanted the key to our, our filing, our filing cabinet. And I said, "No, you, you can't have that." The administrator said, "Yes, I need a key to every, every filing cabinet in the building. That's my responsibility." I said, "I'm sorry that we have too much information that you're not allowed to have, and this is not a city..." So I, and we left it at that, until, oh, a few days later, Mike Nene, the other, we had, we had three council people, Mike, Nene came and said, "Where is this filing cabinet? I can't find the filing cabinet." And I said, "Jeez, I don't know. It was, it was down on the first floor there where, where the, where the council was met." So he said, "Well, I'll, I'll check with Carl. He's a custodian, and maybe he, maybe he knows where it is." So about two days later, here comes Carl up to my office and says, "I found your filing cabinet." I said, "Great. Where is it?" He says, "In the basement." "Really?" He said, "Yeah, in the basement, behind the furnace." So I said, "Can you get it?" He said, "I'll, I'll get them back for you if you don't tell me that I tell anyone that I did it." So, other than that, we had, we had one hearing over the years, which is a testimony, again, to the professionalism and the great administration of, of the staffs, both the fire, fire and, and police. I'm so humbled by this, I can't tell you. So I'd just like to say thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity. And, and we have upgraded the membership on the Civil Service Commission now by having, by having my good friend. Anyway, thank you again, David.
Thank you. We did publish in the formal agenda, we're going to take a recess. It is, for the record, at 7:22. I think we'll call it back to order at 7:30. For family and friends and anybody that's here for the reception, you do not have to leave. We'll just ask you not to come back into the chamber, so we have it a little bit quiet, but feel free to stay out there and enjoy the time with the reception. There's cake and punch out there, so we'll call for a recess. I'll go ahead and call the meeting back to order. For those that are here for the regular agenda items, thank you for indulging us. It's rare that we take a recess at the beginning of a council meeting, but it's very important for those two individuals for us to honor them, so thank you for, for doing that. Again, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I will note for the record that all council members are here, same ones that, when we took the role originally. Ms. Myers, administrator's report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let the council know that later on the agenda, you'll be voting on the FOP agreement. So I understand the FOP approved the agreement at their meeting last night. When we sent this out on Friday, they hadn't voted yet, so that's a, that's a good thing. I want to thank Tom McCarty, representing the union, Jessica Moore, Ray Higgins, Kurt McLannon, and Todd Dudas for their cooperative approach in reaching an agreement, and, and thank you for all you do to serve our community. Also, I wanted to let you know that if you recall, in April of this year, after we approved the boundary agreement with Gretna, both Gretna and Papillion approached Sarpy County to change the future growth and development map relative to the County Industrial Sewer Act. They have put that on their agenda for October 8th. They'll be holding a public hearing to consider our request from earlier this year. Also, we have some upcoming committee meetings. Just a reminder that FNA Committee is meeting on October 1st for a financial update on the Papillion Landing Project, and then the Annexation Ad Hoc Committee will be meeting on October 15th. Lastly, I would just like to introduce Carla Heather Shaw-Risto, our Assistant City Attorney, and Alan is happy to have some additional staff to the legal department. So welcome, Carla, and all of our days aren't this long, so thank you for your endurance. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you also, Carla, for joining us. Next is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve consent? Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Sunday. Do we have any proponents? Oh, Ms. Klug.
Can we pull C4, please?
C4 is pulled. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote on everything except C4.
8A09.
Motion passes, item C4. Resolution, R190185, a resolution to approve the appointment of Carla Ruth Piper to the Civil Service Commission for a five-year term from September 2019 to September 2024. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190185? Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? I noticed Ms. Ruth Piper left the room. Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
8A09.
Motion passes. And again, during that presentation, we talked about a lot about integrity in the process, and that's absolutely who we got onto the commission, so thank you again, Carla. Next is item D1, Ordinance 1847, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to RE Rural Residential Estates for the property legally described as part of the southwest quarter of Section 6 Township 13 North, Range 13 East of the 6 PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located at 5651 Moss Road. The applicant is Martin Steponik. Is there a council member that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. Item D2, Ordinance 1854, an ordinance to amend Sections 9-2, 9-3, and 9-4 of Chapter 9 Boards, Commissions, and Committees of the Papillion Municipal Code to reflect amendments to the Library Board bylaws. Is there a councilman that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Glover. Item E1, Ordinance 1852, an ordinance to amend Chapter 205 Zoning Ordinance, Article 36, having to do with off-street parking, the applicant of the city of Papillion, Off-Street Parking Regulations Ordinance Amendment. This is a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F1, Resolution R190069, a resolution to, to adjust the salary tier ranges for management and exempt positions effective October 1st, 2019. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190069? Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Just make a comment, again, just because we broadcast these for public education, I know we've got some students here. When it comes to cities' management and exempt employees, most of our employee base is under a union, police, fire, and then PCA, which is pretty much everybody else except management. So we've got a fairly, we've got a very formal process to establish the proper salary ranges for management-exempt employees, based on a number of things. But one of the things we do periodically is a market study to under, to understand what's the market saying these positions should be paying, and then we adjust the ranges periodically based on that. In our policy, we actually go to three different sources over about a three-year period of time to understand what those ranges are, and that's how this is derived. Any other council discussion? Please vote.
8A09.
Motion passes. Item F2, Resolution R190171, this is a public hearing and a vote. A resolution to approve a comprehensive plan amendment to amend all maps attached to or otherwise made a part of the comprehensive plan, including all maps attached to or otherwise made a part of any amendments to the comprehensive plan approved by city council. To reflect the boundary established between the city of Papillion and the city of Gretna, separating such city's future land use, planning, zoning, and annexation jurisdiction, as depicted in the inter-local cooperation agreement dated April 16, 2019, for the establishment of such boundary. The applicant is the city of Papillion. It's the comprehensive plan amendment for the Gretna Boundary Agreement. This is a public hearing. I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? I'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R190171? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any council discussion? Please vote.
8A09.
Motion passes. Item F3, Ordinance 1835, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to R4 Multifamily Residential for the property legally described as a replating of Lot 1 Seibold Acres. A subdivision is surveyed, platted, and recorded- A subdivision is surveyed, platted, and recorded in Sarpy County, Nebraska, together with Tax Lots 3 and 4 in the south half of the southwest quarter of Section 32 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of South 114th Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Pinecrest Homes LLC. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1835?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Item F4, Resolution R190172, a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as a replating of Lot 1 Seibold Acres. A subdivision is surveyed, platted, and recorded in Sarpy County, Nebraska, together with Tax Lot 4 and part of Tax Lot 3 in the south half of the southwest quarter of Section 32 Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6PM, Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northwest corner of South 114th Street and Shram Road. The applicant is Pinecrest Homes LLC. This is Ashbury Creek 2, Phase 1. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190172?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilman Klug. Do we have any proponents? If you'd state your name for the record.
Good evening. Pat Hillier, Lamprey, Nearson, 14710 West Dodge Road, representing the applicant. Ashbury Creek 2 is a separate SID from Ashbury Creek, just south of it, 112 single-family lots in our first phase. Second phase will come along when the FEMA study for the floodway is done. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Thank you. Item F5, Resolution R190173, a resolution to approve Ashbury Creek 2 subdivision agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190173?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Ingberg. I'll note for the record, the applicant's still here and we can carry the comments over. But do we have any other proponents? Or anything else to say? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Also, a related item, F6, Resolution R190174, a resolution to approve the sewer and water connection agreement for SID 338, Ashbury Creek 2. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190174?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Item F7, Resolution R190175, a resolution to approve the insertion of a revised Exhibit F4 into the Fourth Amendment to Granite Falls North Subdivision Agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190175?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents?
Welcome.
Good evening. Mark Westergaard, DNA Consulting, 10909 Mill Valley Road. This is something you're probably going to see fairly regularly, just because construction prices are going up so quickly, so when we do a source of use of funds two or two and a half years earlier, and we come time for special assessments, and it's becoming a necessity. Now, we did make one mistake on this one, and that's the sidewalk along Lincoln Road was in the cost initially. When Sarpy County did not participate in the sidewalk costs, it was taken out and we didn't get it back in, so that was our mistake. So for that reason, and just the increase in costs, we would request your approval of this.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Item F8, Resolution R190179, a resolution to approve installation of no parking the side of street signage in the Eagle Ridge, Eagle Hills, Eagle Crest, River Chase, and Walnut Creek Estates subdivisions. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190179?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman, oh, first motion was by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Stube. Mr. Mumgaard.
Yeah.
Let me call for proponents and opponents first.
Sure.
Do we have any proponents? Are there any opponents? Council discussion, Mr. Mumgaard.
I guess I have a procedural question. We're doing this because of the annexations. Do we send any, provide any notice of any particular, any specificity telling them that this is going to happen? Have we heard back from them? You know, it's a small thing that I'm sure there will be some people who will be surprised by it. What if any notice has been given to them?
Mr. Thompson.
We have not provided notice. I coordinated with the city clerk in regards to welcome packages that went out to those folks that were recently annexed, and we were a little late, missed the bus there. It's not something that's uncommon. We talked to the police chief about grace periods and working with them on appropriate locations for that signage. It's not something that's uncommon, given the scale and magnitude of the last annexation. It was a little tough for us to sit down and try to map out every single location, so we figured we'd go street to street and make a determination. But generally speaking, we try to keep the no parking the side of street signage on the side of the street where there's community mailboxes and/or fire hydrants, because, you know, there's a need for EMS service and fire to get to those locations. But we had anticipated that, you know, if there is a concerned citizen, that we would make adjustments as needed as we go through the neighborhoods.
Well, historically, on our other annexations, what if any response, I mean, we've done this for other annexations, what if any response do we typically get from the people?
To my knowledge, very little. You know, there are some folks that utilize more street parking, you know, given the population of their home, you know, and the amount of other, you know, arterial-type vehicles and equipment and things like that, they park in their driveway, but we haven't received anything that's negative. It's actually a benefit for the city in plowing snow, trying to get curb-to-curb, as well as getting EMS and fire police through those neighborhoods with limited parking.
Past annexations, the only thing that I can think of is, it's usually been situation-specific, so somebody's got a unique street, and based on what we did, they'll call and say, "Hey, that doesn't make sense in this situation," and then we've made adjustments like curves or some other things. I can think of two or three of times when we've done them in the past, and we make an adjustment for that specific situation.
Well, do we have the authority to impose, I mean, this is, you know, what side the no parking is, is set out by city ordinance. Does that extend to the SID, or to the development areas and the SIDs? So that, I guess I look at it and say, "Well, what happens during the development process that we have to do this as annexation? Are we really changing anything? Can we instead impose these restrictions when the development is first laid out so that nobody gets surprised when they get annexed?"
Good education for the public as well. Cities have different ordinance powers than counties have, and of course, SIDs are outside of city limits, so they can fall under the county regulations, and counties are restricted in a lot of what they can do from ordinances. So generally, within the county, they can put the parking on both sides. We do have the policy for parking in one side, so it's the annexation brings them under, outside of county regulations and into city, which then allows us to implement our policy.
Well, I don't think this is a problem. It hasn't been in the past. Given the size of the annexation that we have here, I wouldn't be surprised to have people question what's going on and why the change. So would you please update us if you encounter a significant number of people who are responding to this, so maybe we can, you know, if it becomes a problem to people, maybe we can adjust our development process so that people don't get surprised by it.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Item F9, Resolution R190189, a resolution to approve the Fraternal Order of Police Papillion Lodge Number 19 Union Agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190189?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Gaines. Proponents? Welcome, sir. If you'd state your name for the record.
My name's Doug Muller, Papillion resident, live in Ward 1. I've been employed with the police department as a police officer since 2008. Guessing everybody recognizes me because I normally work the city council security. I've been in our investigations unit the last three years, and I also serve as the FOP president. So with this contract negotiation going through, I was hoping to come up and have a few words as far as putting everything in context and how successful we've been with our previous contract. So with that being said, as far as national trends go, everyone knows that the police applicants and all the numbers are going down. Papillion is not absent of that, as far as the police applicants and the testing that we see is decreasing. So in that 2015-2019 contract, we were able to attract and hire 15 applicants. Five of those applicants came from lateral or hired from other agencies. They brought with them 26 years of experience. Three of those applicants actually only applied with the Papillion Police Department. So that's why I'm trying to stress, as far as the contract that we offer and being that contract wages and benefits aren't everything that matter, but being competitive in the local market is important in order to attract those applicants in and make sure that we have highly trained and competent people. Also to mention, during that time, we did lose two officers to an Omaha lateral class. So again, as far as remaining competitive within the local market in order to have that retention and also recruitment process. With this contract that you're viewing tonight or voting on tonight, I think that we are staying competitive within the local market, and I think that's important, why it passes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, and I just want to make a comment as well. I want to thank both the union officials and the city administration for the negotiations. This one, if people track our negotiations, this year negotiations took a little bit longer. We mentioned this with fire as well. We really have a lot of new people on both sides of that table, so part of it was understanding each other, understanding each other's perspectives, what was in the agreement. But I said it with fire again, I think we entered it with a high level of trust and we exited it with a high level of trust. So really large thank you to both sides. Thank you very much. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I also kind of want to echo, Mayor, what your comments are with regard to the administration and also the union officials that were involved in those discussions. I also want to recognize the fact that we had another one two weeks ago that was done. I believe that's the third, if I'm not mistaken, agreements that had been established. These are long-term agreements. I think they're beneficial to not only the employees, but also to the city and to the council, because it essentially lays out kind of what our budgets are going to be going forward. So I think I want to give credit to Chris Myers and Amber for all their work with regard to getting those things accomplished and coming in front of us with not a whole lot of controversy. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Thank you again. Item F10, Resolution R190191, a resolution to approve Addendum 1 to the agreement between the City of Papillion, Nebraska, and the Papillion Classified Employee Association, PCEA. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190191?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Ingberg. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. F11, Resolution R190193, a resolution to approve police changes for Section 3-3, Paid Personal Days, 3-5 Sick Leave, and 320 Post-Employment Health Plan of the Personnel Manual, and to add 321 elective retiree health insurance benefit. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190193?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Jaworski. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. F12, Resolution R190194, a resolution to renew Travelers Insurance Company as the provider for the city's property liability and workman's compensation insurance coverage. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190194? Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? If you'd state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, James Charlesworth, Charlesworth Consulting, 1828 Walnut, Kansas City, Missouri. We were the project manager for both the selection of the broker and then overseeing the marketing of the property and liability workers' compensation insurance. In the audience is also two members of the Harry A. Koch Company, who is your insurance broker. We saw some increase, as you can see. The actual premium rates were under 10%, which is pretty good in today's market. Majority of your increase is due to higher property values, higher budget expenditures, and higher payrolls. So even though we'd like to come to you with a bunch of savings, that's not the case, but I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion or questions? Please vote. Motion passes. Item F13, Resolution R190195, changes to the management and exempt employee contributions for health insurance. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190195?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Stube. Do we have any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. It's all the regular agenda items. Committee reports, public safety met. Any report, Mr. Gaines?
Public safety did meet tonight. We started out having a session with City Attorney Alan Teelin and Assistant City Attorney Carla Heather Shaw-Risco, seeking some legal advice on a few issues. Collectively, as a group, we're all very concerned about the amount of pedestrian accidents, you know, throughout the metro area, and especially the one in Papillion that's happened recently. So as the Public Safety Committee decided to provide some direction to the city staff of things that we'd like them to look at moving forward, the first items that we discussed were anything that we could do immediately to remedy any situations as far as speed control, or if we were looking at prohibiting left turns, additional traffic markers. One of the things that I know has already been put into effect is, I know the police department has some added presence all throughout the City of Papillion, but I've seen them especially on Washington Street, so I know that's very appreciated. Moving forward a little bit, we talked about the city looking into a plan to start grooming the downtown traffic flow into the vision and what we want it to be at some point in time. We understand that as we start having more pedestrians downtown, we're going to need to redo, you know, some of the traffic patterns that are down there. And so the city staff is going to put together some possible plans to come back to the Public Safety Committee for us to look at, to move forward with or not, and recommend them to the full council. The final thing that we spoke of, we talked about doing an entire study throughout the city of pedestrian crossings. So basically, anywhere that we have crosswalks, looking at them, attempting to see if there's a way to set a citywide standard, and then implementing that standard throughout all of our crosswalks. But basically, it was just about overall general safety of pedestrians in the City of Papillion, and we look forward to hearing from the city staff.
Thank you very much. No other committees met? Comments from the floor? I know we had a number of students here. You guys get to come up to the podium and let us know what brings you out. Introduce yourselves and what brings you. All of the students.
My name is Hannah. I'm a student at UNO, and I'm majoring in public health. So right now, I'm in a public health policy class, and we're supposed to come to a city council meeting and kind of just observe and see how it goes.
Pretty much the same thing with me. My name's Katrina Cruzey, also UNO student, public health major for a public health policy class. I did graduate from Papillion La Vista South, so I am a Papillion, like, native.
Okay, I have a question. I was going to ask you, among all the city councils that you could have gone to, why did you pick the City of Papillion City Council?
Yes, I'm from Papillion, so that's why I picked it.
No, this is where you say, "Because I've heard it was the best."
Yeah, that too.[1782.21][1782.21](Laughter).
Thank you.
My name is Mylan Hubert. I go to Papillion La Vista South High School, and I have Mr. Callahan for my government teacher, so one of our projects is to come and observe a city council meeting.
Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Ben Huber, I go to Pavilion Middle School, and I am doing this for my citizenship in the community mayor badge for Boy Scouts.
Welcome, and if you've got any other requirements that you need to meet, probably Ms. Klug or myself would be happy to hang around afterwards if you need that. Welcome. Any council comments?
Just a couple of things, well, been kind of busy the last couple of weeks. Ms. Myers and myself, a number of staff, met with Congressman Bacon's office. The FCC's making some rulings about cable franchise agreements, and we want to make sure we're aware of what's going on that, and that they're in sync with what local needs are, so they can influence anything at a congressional level if they need that. So we got a good relationship with his office, and we started that communication. The United Cities of Sarpy County's had a couple of meetings. Most of the conversation's been around sales tax, and how to get the state a little more transparent and resolve some of the issues we've seen over the years with sales tax reporting. We also had an LCRA meeting, a couple of council members are on that. Again, that's the committee that's making the recommendations for downtown redevelopment. We had the proposals out for what to do. LCRA met, and they made a recommendation then to go to the internal scoring committee. That committee is now meeting, they'll make a recommendation back to the LCRA, and then the final recommendation will come to the council on how to move forward with that. Also, went out and met with Patriot Elementary, third grade, talked a lot about government. The Papillion Volunteer Fire Department had a salute to safety, so I know a number of people were out there for that. The United Cities have been met again. If, just as a reminder to council, if there's anything you're concerned about from a legislative perspective, make sure you're raising that to us. Don't expect a lot to get done, we're in the second year of the two-year session, and it's a short session, and I think the legislature pretty much is going to be paralyzed with trying to figure out property tax and the Nebraska Advantage. There's a split in the body, and those two have got to come together. That'll probably take up most of the time, but if there's things you want from a legislative perspective, it's not too soon to think about those. Realistically, we'd probably take it into the next biennium, but let us know about that. We also had a meeting with the MFO, that's the fire organization that oversees, so it's the Papillion Rural Fire, city of La Vista and city of Papillion. It's the board that we're on to manage the fire department, so that met. Talked about a lot of long-term needs, capital replacement, a long-term plan about when do trucks need to be rotated in and out, and then we talked about with all of the growth, at what point do we need to look at another station, and where would that be? And then Papillion Rural Fire and the city of La Vista, being comfortable with where we landed on the budget as well. The Sarpy Leadership Class through the chamber had their session where they take a bus tour of the county. So we got on there and gave a tour of Papillion to about forty people in the leadership class. The Historical Society, for the third year in a row, hosted a naturalization ceremony, Councilman Glover was there. So in Papillion, and it was hosted at the library this year, there were individuals from thirteen different countries that took the oath to become U.S. citizens. That's a pretty impressive ceremony, so if it's held again, I would encourage you to come to that. And then Facebook brought a meeting to town, they call it Boost. They're teaching small businesses how to use their tools, so it's a free seminar they put on. There were about two hundred and eighty individuals that came to that meeting this morning. Facebook said it's their largest one, it equaled what they did in Dallas-Fort Worth. So Facebook is bringing a lot of resources to the local market to help small business and entrepreneurs, so we really appreciate that, and it's free. I think that's most of the sessions. Ms. Myers and I will be in Lincoln tomorrow, we're going to be on a panel presenting at the league conference. The topic is generally, how do we leverage state tools? So, you know, things that the legislature's put in place, how have we leveraged them at a local level for economic development? Any other council comments? If not, we do have a closed session tonight, and just for the students, closed sessions are not real common. There's only about two or three reasons the city council can, as a whole, can go behind closed doors and have a conversation. Generally, you can only have a majority of the city council when we're out in a public meeting that has been advertised. The logic is, the public needs to know what we're doing. But we do have a right to go into closed session and talk behind closed doors when we're doing contract negotiations or anything related to personnel, where it could affect somebody's basically image. Obviously, when you're negotiating, you don't want to tell the other side what you're negotiating, so we can go behind closed doors, figure out our strategy. We can take no votes behind closed session, all votes have to be back out here in public session, and anything we do behind closed doors stays behind closed doors, and that's set out by state law and the open records laws. So with that, is there a motion to go into closed session to protect the public interest to discuss contract negotiations and potential litigation?
Motion by Councilman Klug, second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight A zero Nays.
Motion passes. I will state for the record, the purpose for the closed session is only to discuss contract negotiations and potential litigation. Closed session will include the mayor, the city council, city administrator, assistant city administrator, city clerk, city attorney, assistant city attorney.